Yeah, that's what I did when I turned it at least. I did on the. Well, send me. Well, yeah.
Look there. Ready to go? I didn't, I haven't heard recording in. Welcome to the Lion County Planning Commission for Tuesday, March eleventh, twenty twenty five. Lion County Administrative Complex, twenty seven South Main Street in Yearington, Nevada. A little bit of readings to do before we get started. So the Planning Commission meetings are open to the public and members of the public may attend in person. And the meetings are also virtual and the public may attend via virtual Zoom. Public comment. Lion County allows the fair alternatives to for public comment. If you are attending the virtual Zoom meeting, public comment may be provided by raising your hand. And requesting to provide public comment. This can occur in several ways, including dial dialing star nine from your phone to raise your hand and request a speak. For public comment to unmute yourself by star six. You can also provide public comment for this meeting by sending an email to countyclerks@lion-county.org. The day prior to the posted meeting date, be sure to type public comment in the subject line. Written public comments may also be mailed to the Lion County Community Development Office at twenty seven South Main Street, Yearington, Nevada, eight, nine, four, four, seven. But all public comments must be received prior to the date of the meeting, which the comments are to be included in the supplemental materials. Any written public comment received the day of the meeting will be compiled and added as a supplemental materials to the county's website. And distributed to the planning commission within twenty, excuse me, twenty four hours of the meeting or after the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person at the Gray Hunroe Lion County Commission Chambers, twenty seven South Main Street, Yearing to Nevada. Action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted in the agenda. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in a silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items will be further removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable. And may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict the comments based upon a viewpoint. Okay, item one on the agenda is the roll call. Commissioner Merritt. It's here. Commissioner Sal.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sarah Solos on Zoom. Commissioner Allen. And Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Okay. And myself, that means we have a quorum. And for Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to ask Commissioner Allen if he would please.
Pledge of Allegiance. I, I mean, I have so much. And so we're probably for which stands the nation under God, in the visible, but of everything to us for all.
Thank you. Item number three, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. Members of public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related. To the Lion County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record and to sign and print their name on the form at the lectern. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic. Commission reserves the right to reduce the three minute time limit as well as limit the total time for public comment. If your item requires extended discussion, please request the chair to calendar the item for the matter for future planning. Commission meeting. The planning commission. Will not restrict comments based on viewpoint. The same applies to public testimony on each agenda item. The chair may reopen public participation at any time during the meeting. No action may be taken on upon a matter raised under the item of the on the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda. As an item upon which action may be taken. So, that being said, item number four, review and adoption of the agenda for possible action. Is there any discussion on the agenda?
I'll make a motion, Commissioner Sarah Solat, to accept. The adoption of the agenda.
Actually, I have a motion on second. Any other comments? Of the comment on the agenda. Okay, call for a vote. All favor of adopting the gender as submitted, signify by saying I opposed. Going none, then the gender adoption passes. Six of. Okay, for possible action approval of the minutes. These are the minutes from the February eleventh, twenty twenty five meeting. Board comments.
I've found nothing significant.
Okay. We'll do somewhere. I don't know where it's at.
I mean, I need the motion to adopt the minutes from the February.
A second. Okay. And the motion on the second, we'll do discussion. Soon none. Call for a vote.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Public comment. This is an action item.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this? Soon done here online. And we'll go ahead with the vote. All favor. Or two minutes submitted, signify by saying I. Oppose, signify by saying I abstain, none.
I will abstain. I was not at the meeting.
That's right.
Commissioner Sarah Sol.
Okay, I will advise me. Submit, I see we have one, but it's tied to a, an agenda item, so move that to the sign. Soon done. We'll move on to public hearing items. The first one is item seven on the agenda for possible action before the recommendation of the Board of County Commissioners. For requests from BBCJ Investors LLC for a zoning map amendment to amend. The zoning map designation from the Title X District of RR dash five, fifth world residential district. Dash twenty acres to the Title fifteen district of LI. Dash S Light Industrial dash Suburban. Located at one thirty five Evans Avenue in Dayton for parcel totaling approximately one hundred and sixty two acres. APM zero one six dash three one dash zero four, PLZ dash two zero two five dash zero zero one. There are staff reports that must speak because there's Lisa.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Lisa Nash, Senior Planner. So today we're here for the zoning app. The zoning map amendment on one parcel. It will change the zoning from which the. RR five fifth world residential district twenty acres to the title fifteen district of light industrial suburban. The property is located, as you can see on the plan here, at one thirty five Evans. Avenue in Dayton, that is located just south of Lakes Boulevard in Dayton Valley area. The total acreage for the site is one sixty two point zero six acres and it generally slopes from. The southwest to the northeast following the drainages you can see on this plan. Access to the site, oh, sorry. Access to the site would be from Evans Avenue, which currently terminates in a cul-de-sac on an undeveloped property directly north. So. Here we're looking at the master plan pages for this property. The subject site is located within the suburban character district. And under the twenty twenty comprehensive master plan land use, it is in the employment. District as shown on this map, and you can see the surrounding properties, including some of the property that's owned by BLM. Is in the employment zone here. Right, so I wanted to look at, this is the land use table from the master plan. And you can see that within the employment zone. Light industrial suburban isn't allowed use and it does meet the suburban character district. It is directly adjacent to. The utility service district and. We'll go into that more in a moment. To the zoning. So currently, the property is zoned as RR five under Title ten or RR twenty, which is Royal Residential twenty acres under Title fifteen. The right-hand picture shows how they would like to change this to light industrial suburban, which does match the area directly adjacent in north. Which is developed as industrial properties there. I want to point out that all the property and paint surrounding it in this property is owned by Bureau of Land Management to the east, west, and south. And when the corner touches down there. Which is having industrial suburban is currently quarry and has been there for quite a while. So this isn't incompatible and with it being BLM land currently, there's obviously no intention for residential development at this time. So normally I don't go into the public facilities portion of this, but I want to go into this in a little detail on this project. The project is not within the Lion County's Utilities Department Service area. However, can we go back a slide? This is a good one to see. When we're looking at the left-hand side. All of the industrial area above is within the Lion County Utilities Service area. And so it is directly adjacent. And it would be appropriate to be annexed in if there's capacity and if it it's allowed. So the applicant has made. A proposal for annexation into the utility district. And will proceed along those lines. For annexation and as it lies within the suburban character district already and with the employment, it is a reasonable request to be annexed. However, there's no guarantee on annexation and in any. Situation though, if they are denied annexation or there's not capacity or they can't, the board doesn't feel that that's acceptable. Then the property would still be allowed to be developed with a private well and a commercial septic system. So they still have a path forward with utilities. But they have started the annexation process. So. Staff does feel that thing within these districts with the the master plan. And the zone they will change to, it is a reasonable area for district expansion. But with the current concerns about the affluent disposal capacity to provide diets who are serviced for future projects. It may not be feasible at this time, but they do have a route forward. I want to go, as usual, we have findings we have to meet for every. Thing we bring before you and in chapter fifteen point two two zero point oh five. It lists the findings which are in much more detail in the stack report, but there's a couple areas I wanted to point out today. On today, I'm sorry, on item A. That the amendment's consistent with the policies within the master plan. It is. An area that is served by or adjacent. I'm going to back up. There's three in particular goals or policies of the master plan I wanted to bring out today. Policy FS one point one, location of new development. It says that it occurred in an area that is served by or adjacent to areas with existing utility systems. So it definitely meets that, which is one of the goals of the master plan. Another policy LU one point four. Locate industrial development as designated on countywide land use plan or determined by criteria. And it is in that area. It is definitely located in an area that doesn't impact existing residential settlements. The last one that I particularly wanted to bring up was policy LU three point two, business and industry locations that are consistent with future land use plans. This is to encourage industrial development where public facility exists or plan to accommodate such development cost effectively. As it is directly adjacent to an industrial area, directly adjacent to. Utility service area, it seems to meet these goals. I felt it was important to go into a little detail of why and where it meant. Under item B. As I discussed on the last slide, although they're not within the service area, they've requested annexation and they do have the ability for well and septic going forward. The annexation isn't permissible. Also, the last item C, the proposed amendment is compatible with the actual master plan adjacent use. It definitely is. If the applicant came in and spoke with us beforehand, discussed the different zoning, it didn't seem appropriate to stick a heavy industrial zoning. Heavy industrial suburban there, but light industrial suburban as it's. The same as the properties to the north made sense and it is compatible with the surrounding uses. And that's all I have for you today. I do want to add. They did, the applicant didn't make a presentation before the Dayton. Regional Advisory Board. I would definitely say have, and I was trying to prevent it before the regional advisory boards. I was there as well to answer questions if there was needed and there was no opposition or no comments from public with concerns about this property. And the applicant, oh, I'm here for questions and the applicant will have a presentation after this, sorry.
I was just going to ask if there are any more questions for staff.
Yeah, I do. And and it's probably my lack of understanding. But usually when I go through these projects, staff give us a matrix, you know, of zoning consistency. And I looked at RR five and I see it converts to RR twenty. But and it makes sense looking at the map that it's employment, but is this wrong?
No, that is actually correct. The confusion is, so when we make master plan changes and we adopted the last master plan change. Some things got put in areas that they may seem incompatible. So employment is not what you would find in a rural area with RR twenty. But these are just some of the anomalies that develop as plans develop in the county, master plans evolve. And there's things we correct as development comes in.
Okay, so what was a little confusing then with it being listed as RR five on page fourteen? When you go back to page twenty one, it is listed as N one and converting to light industrial. And so that added to my confusion.
I understand. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, it should have been RR five.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Oh, I know you're trying to mess me up.
How's it going?
The only comment I have is I also attended the meeting and I thought your presentation was very well done and and. Took care of a lot of questions that the people at the Dayton Advisory Board meeting. And so I appreciated that. The only thing, the only thing I had was when I first went through this, I had some. Concerns about the utilities. It seemed like everything was just up in the air and it might be too soon to be concerned about that. So I'll just go with what you presented and we'll take it from there.
I would like to add that, you know, they will come back in depending on the land use. If this is approved and they come back in with the land use. Proposal development, it will look at another entitlement, whether it's a CUP or an AD. Additional use permit or administrative design review depending on what they come in with and what's required. So staff and potentially board will see this again.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one other comment.
Commissioner Jones.
This has gone to a, a, a better taxable event. For the county by having industrial in there, light industrial. So it will increase the taxes to the county. So I'm a hundred percent behind it.
Just one other comment. I've gone to calling. The advisory board, Dr. Cab, because it's.
I like that. Doctor Cat, that works.
Okay, any other questions from Commissioners?
The applicant has a presentation as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Chris Baker, Manher Consulting here on behalf of the applicant. I do have a, a presentation. It's very redundant. Lisa did a great job. I can bounce through it real quick just to. Reiterate some of the statements that she knows of.
Oh.
Okay, I'll, I, again, south of Lake Bull Bark is the location here. If you can just stand a joke through these Gavin. There we go. As Lisa indicated, current master plan designation is implemented. As indicated there in the master plan update and as, as pointed out, you can see the. The suburban character district boundary there on the, on the center portion. And really what we do here is we have a disconnect, right? So the existing master plan calls for employment. But we had really a non-conforming underlying zoning, so we're really just remedying that. So this is a, a mapping fling up. There is no development proposed with this. I know there's been a lot of discussion about utilities and service territories. I will point out that. We are within the suburban character district, which in your master plan does require. The connection to public utilities. So that's why we processed that, that annexation application. I know those, this may be the first one. That's actually going forward. So that process is a little new to navigate, I think, both for the public and for staff. So we're going to work through those. And as I indicated, there is no development at this point. Anything that does come forward in the future will go through the necessary applications. And again, just light industrial and really all we're doing is, is implementing. The underlying master plan designation and bringing the zoning into compliance. So with that, available to the questions.
We can go to the board for your questions. Commission first. None. Really online or have the comments? For the applicant. Soon none. Okay. We're ready for motion then. All right, the motion.
Based on the aforementioned findings, I move the planning commission for your recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Of the request of BBCJ Investors LLC for the zoning map amendment to amend the zoning map designation. Title ten district RR five, fifth world residential district. Residential district, twenty acres to the title fifteen district of L one. S Light Industrial, L I, excuse me, suburban located at one thirty five Evans Avenue in Dayton. For partial totaling approximately one hundred and sixty two point oh six acres, APM zero one six three eight one oh four. PLZ two zero two five zero zero one.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second, any, uh, commissions, any comments on this? Okay, then I will call for a vote all in favor of the motion. We signify by saying I.
Hi.
Bye.
And extensions hearing done, capacity seven to nothing.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Good job, Lisa.
That brings us to item seven B, also for possible action to approve the request. From William Creek Farm or alternative parcel map, the subdivision approximately ten thousand square foot. Parcel into two parcels, the smallest being approximately four thousand nine hundred and thirty three square feet. APM zero one nine dash seven zero one dash one six, PLZ dash two zero two four dash zero eight one. It's not listed on the agenda, but the address is two or six Meadowwood Court in Dayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Lewis Arriola, Senior Planner. So the subject parcel is located in Dayton. And this vicinity map shows relative location out to the west. Is the intersection of Highway fifty and Dayton Valley Road. That provides primary access to a portion of Dayton, as we all know. Zooming in, Lake Boulevard connects to Dayton Valley Road and then via Palmer Court and into the subject parcels. Address, which is two oh six Meadowwood Court. You can see that the subject parcel includes two duplex residential structures. And to the east, Justin Lane also shares frontage with this parcel, although the, the formal address is two oh six Meadowwood Court. This image is included in the staff report. It displays the parcel lines as well as the aerial images from the county's GIS application. I just wanted to just point out here in the presentation, those lines are a bit askew. I think we can see that they're just, the parcel lines are just shifted a bit south. The master plan designation is suburban residential within a suburban character district, just as Lisa's presentations pointed out. For this whole area of Dayton, suburban residential master plan designated areas. Do support. For the consistent zoning. Do support the type of development that's already in place and that is multifamily and duplexes. So this is where it gets a little odd. These applicable zoning here, as we always discuss in twenty eighteen, the county adopted the current development code, Title fifteen. We adopted the zoning consistency matrix with Title fifteen. Which converts the expired zoning names from our prior development code Title ten into the applicable districts today. In this case, the conversion from that C one expired named district is to neighborhood commercial. So this image shows all of the zoning districts for the, the subject parcel and surrounding parcels. After already being converted through the consistency matrix. And we can see that the entire neighborhood here, which is already developed with these duplexes and multifamily structures. Is zones neighborhood commercial. So we're one to come. So we're one to come forward uh and propose a duplex on neighborhood commercial zone plan, staff would not be able to issue permits uh because neighborhood commercial doesn't support duplexes and residential development. However, title ten within the commercial districts, including C one, did support multifamily development. So the development was already in place when we adopted the new code. Um, so that's why it does seem somewhat inconsistent. Uh, the staff report does touch on it. And of course, I'll be ready to answer questions about this if you have any. Um, but all of the duplexes we see on the image here within that neighborhood commercial district are legally existing, nonconforming. In other words, they met the code when they were constructed. They just don't happen to meet the code today. Uh, it is important to note the applicant's given no indication uh that there's a proposal for additional development. And just as any existing legally existing nonconforming use uh would be subject to, we're one to come forward and request further development along the lines of du- of residential development within this district, uh that would need to to attain approval of a conditional use permit. Uh, but again, that's that's not been suggested here in any way. I can pause there if there's any questions or I could just finish the presentation.
That's going to be a question.
Sure, I have a question. All of these parcels now duplexes all around there?
The majority are yes, sir. So certainly to the north.
Okay.
Um, and to the west, they are all uh multifamily. There is one little parcel at the end of the Meadowwood Court in the northwest corner uh that I think might be a single family residential, but to the northwest there, uh those that little block of six, each of those are duplexes. Yes, sir.
So so title ten allows it, title fifteen does not because
Yes, sir, the conversion. Why? Why would we take that change on on a code? I I'm not really sure.
Swing out there is already, right?
Yeah.
Well, that was gonna be my follow-up question. Um, would it be prudent to amend title fifteen to allow duplexes since all of them are duplexes in that area?
I I'm not really sure. I mean, that's I think that's a larger question um than than I can answer in the context of this.
Do propose on putting duplexes there since all the others are duplexes, they're gonna have to come back for a conditional use permit. Then we're gonna be in a nonconforming situation.
Right, I mean, I I for these parcels, if we look at the parcel dimensions, um and then the what would be the required setbacks for this type of development, I don't know that there's really a lot of room on these parcels to be further intensified. Um, if we recall that the master plan designation of suburban residential, um that would support a zone change uh to either uh, you know, a suburban residential nine thousand, maybe even MFR. Um, but essentially the master plan supports a future zone change to a district that would allow residential development. So if if someone did run into this problem, instead of having to go through a conditional use permit process, they could apply for the zone change. Uh, staff would likely be able to support it because it would be supported by the master plan and then they could move forward with their development plan.
I like hearing you have a solution for it.
You'll see those before this, until I I start checking it out. I mean, I also, it it in running through some of the mapping uh history when I was looking at the recorded documents uh for the site, this parcel structure seemed to have been constructed, these are rough numbers or rough dates, around two thousand one. And then those that little block of six that are all separated, they look like the exact same construction type, same buildings, same size, right? Likely built by the same builder. I didn't do that much research. But they were built in two thousand three. A subdivision map and parcel maps that recorded those individual parcels to the northwest was in two thousand two. So from what I could gather, in two thousand one, these buildings were constructed on one parcel. In two thousand two, the parcels were all established in the northwest and then in two thousand three, the other buildings followed within their own little parcel footprints. So this one seems to have just been a little left behind. Um, which is why it's there's two structures on one parcel. I don't know if that's too much information, but I I did do the research, I thought, and chair.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else with questions? All right, oh, do you have more?
We should, well, nope. We decided new slide. I wasn't like, okay, go ahead. Sorry, sir. Uh, so this is the map, uh the ten thousand square feet. Parent parcel proposed to be split into one parcel, four thousand nine hundred and thirty-three square feet and the other five thousand and sixty-seven square feet. Uh, applicable setbacks and appropriate area for uh public utility easements is provided in in the proposed new configuration. Uh, there is sort of a note in in the staff report about the fact that this this potential change could assist um with some uh I I think inconsistencies with addressing. Uh, if we recall right now, there's frontage on Justin Lane and Meadowwood Court. Um, I I wasn't able to to spend the time to to ask about emergency response issues, but I have heard there'd been some confusion. Right? If somebody, if the frontage is on Justin Lane and the address is Meadowwood Court, imagine someone easily going to Meadowwood Court. So um that that should provide uh I think some relief for some of the confusion. And then the the findings for uh a tentative parcel map, technically there were few criteria uh for the planning commission. Um, that might just be a semantic differentiation, but they're not quite findings, uh but they are found in in chapter fifteen, six oh six oh seven D. And uh one of them that uh that that came up in in making the findings and then uh responding to staffs responding to the to the comments and correspondence of the utility district, uh resulted in recommended condition of of approval number four. So per the Line County Utility Department, uh when these buildings were constructed, they were only constructed with one connection for Meadowwood Court uh for water uh and for sewer. But most importantly for water, uh the the utility district confirmed that the usage, because right now there's two duplex, four units total, um is exceeding the water rights that have been dedicated to the utility district. Uh, and as a result, um were the applicant to move forward to record a final map, the utility district has uh provided language, it is reflected here in this condition, that there are a number of steps uh the applicant developer would have to execute uh before recording the final map. And most notably, it is uh independent connection to that eastern structure, the one with the Justin Lane uh frontage. Uh, because right now, again, there's just one line and one leader. So independent meters and lines and connections will have to be constructed. Uh, easements over that area, if they're not within the the standard public utility easements um would also have to be granted so that the utility district have access uh to the meters and the new infrastructure. Uh, and then it's most lo- most likely, because we've seen in utility districts determinations, um the developer may be required to dedicate more water rights to Line County Utility District. Again, I know that was a lot. Again, I of course be ready for for questions. I think if I have any more slides. Oh, well, we do have here, I did include the the email I received from from Mr. Doodle, Line County Utility District. I'm just kind of highlighting some of the language that's again reflected in condition number four. And here's a recommended motion uh as well as an image of the map. And of course, valuable for questions. I'm not quite sure if Mr. Crook uh the surveyor or the applicant is online or if they have anyone else. I wasn't able to see. Looks like he is.
Good morning. David Crook with Lumison Associates. I'm here to answer any questions you may have for me.
I will, we should probably ask. We should probably ask staff questions first.
Yeah, are there any questions for questions for staff?
I just, I just kind of had a clarification question. Um so the utility department has one connection for water and sewer to this property that has like four households on it, right?
Yes.
And that's probably the reason they're exceeding their water rights, because
It sounds like.
Yeah, because if they were individual, they wouldn't.
You're spot on there. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. So if we had thrown this today, then the condition would be that they would split those off and
In order, yes, well, for us, in order to record the final map, that's the way the conditions wrote it. The applicant after providing the community development, we process the recording of the final map or the review of the final map before it's recorded, uh but we would first need confirmation from the utility district that all of their requirements have been met.
Okay.
Any further questions from the commission? Well, go ahead.
Let's see, are we okay with the conditions?
Hi, I'm Mr. Cook, um directly, he's he's the representative. Um, I did make him aware of this. I I think uh if I I don't want to speak for him, but I I think he and I initially, when we first looked at this review, were aware of of some of the utility challenges. Uh, but through this process, getting to this point, I we both become aware of it. So he he's aware that the condition was coming, but I won't speak for him.
Yeah, we're in the process. We've started the process of of um digging into this, if you will, uh to um to to figure out what is going on. The the buildings are built separately, so there's got to be different meters on the buildings, but we're not at this point still sure exactly how this all came about uh and what the exact remedy is to fix it, but that's the plan is to to get all that together and and uh make these two viable uh parcels uh with that water and and sewer uh infrastructure.
Thank you.
One question there. So these parcels right now are not, could not be sold individually. They'd have to sell both.
No, it's just one parcel.
Both condos, if they wanted to sell it, but by splitting this property into this situation, they could literally sell individually those parcels off in the future.
Yes, sir. Uh, one of the standard conditions you'll see in our tentative parcel map set of conditions that we we've taken into our include does clearly state that no lock can be sold until uh final package recorded.
Makes sense. Anyone else? We can open up the public comment. See if there's one in the audience here. I do see one hand raised. Could you um state your name for the record, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Keri Luna. I um I'm the owner of one of the parcels that is located in one one five Justin Lane. And my question is, how will this changes affect all the other units in the future?
Staff can answer, but we're not allowed to.
Uh, I it's appropriate. I'm I'm happy to offer a response because I I don't think there really is one. Uh, I I don't really see in any way how this would affect any other units other than that that structure to the to the east. Uh, maybe formally within Line County records would get a new address, a Justin Lane address. Um, I I believe for postal delivery purposes, they already have a Justin Lane. It's just some of our records again still denote the two oh six Meadowwood Court. But I can't imagine any other change. Again, no other development is proposed, no expansion of development. Um, as previously mentioned, the condition use permit would even be required. So as a result of this parcel split, there is no uh allowance offered or granted to to further the, you know, the the residential density. Again, no development proposed. I I respectfully, I can't imagine any change. Other than temporary construction for the new new lines.
The new lines. Oh, you're saying the new lines, that would be maybe inconvenient thing for that.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want I just wanna add that um having one line for the different units is very challenging. I see why you are trying to make this change. So uh we hope that in the future we will like to do the same. Um, because right now we rent like there's two units. We rent one unit and rent the other one. And the individuals sharing that same line is very challenging to split the bills is very hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
This one.
All the common is taken care of. Um, I'll entertain motions.
We'll make a motion. Based on the findings one through three, I move that the Line County Planning Commission approve the request from William William Creek bomb for a tentative parcel map to subdivide in approximately ten thousand square foot parcel into two parcels with smallest being four thousand nine hundred and thirty-three square feet, APN zero one nine dash zero dash seven oh one dash one six PLZ two zero two four two eight one, subject to the following conditions of approval. And where I said oh earlier in the first one, it's zero.
Just for a second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further planning permission? Permission or discussion? Call for a vote. Call for a vote to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or extension, soon then. S is seven zero zero six. Okay, thank you.
It's six zero, I think, right? Just to clarify.
Pardon me?
It's six zero for the vote, correct?
Yes.
That's right, six zero.
We're missing one.
All right, next item on the agenda is I have a number of communities development director, Mr. Henderson.
Good morning, Commissioner. Um, Kevin Henderson, Lake County Community, I'll project for your credit. Um, no major updates um for this meeting, but as always, whenever there are any questions, comments, concerns. Yes, sir.
You know, it'd be helpful if you'd finish with with a little short presentation on how title ten, title fifteen, how they move and 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 actually how they work.
Sure, we could, we can provide a presentation on how to utilize the consistency matrix that's on.
That that would be great. Appreciate it.
Did you get a copy of the matrix? Well, at one meeting, we were given this. I've got a copy of it.
It's been stored years ago.
It's not the matrix. It's how the how it gets applied is, you know, kind of what we're looking at. Uh, because moving it to fifteen from ten, ten has, if they have ten and they don't want to move to fifteen, they stay at ten, right? Under that zoning?
No, so currently all title ten zoning classifications transfer to title fifteen, and then we apply current um land use and design standards. So you don't, you don't the, it's basically a nomenclature issue, right? And we're just transitioning the name. All the land use would still apply the same um within title fifteen. If that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, so the conditions are safe.
It can get confusing, though, like the one we had today that Lisa presented.
Correct. That's definitely a good suggestion uh to bring forward, kind of. How we utilize, yeah, going from the assessors page to identifying their zoning and then pulling up to consistency matrix and then how we look at it um and then move that forward in the process.
I'd like to make a recommendation that staff make the commissioners a copy of the zoning consistency matrix.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. So that I use it.
I'll take a look. Any other questions for Mr. Henderson? Well, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is commissioner comments and agenda requests. Does any commissioner have comments or requests? All right, then. Soon then. Item ten, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendaized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission or approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Ryan County Planning Commission but haven't but are not on items appearing on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes for personal topic and will not be restricted based on viewpoint. No action may be taken upon a matter raised since under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Do we have any public comment in the chambers? Or online? Seeing none. Where is it? No, that's the cursor. That cursor throws us off every time. Okay, soon then. Move on to item eleven, which is adjournment, and it is nine forty-five. Move on to item eleven, which is adjournment, and it is nine forty-five.